I'd like to bring to order the Board of Hasset Correctional Board of Selectmen Meeting, Tuesday, February 27, 2018. Call to order, roll call please.
Kevin McCarthy here.
Diane Kennedy here.
Paul Schur here.
Jackie Nigler here.
Steve Kellerman over here.
If you wish to join us in the pledge of allegiance, may do so. Do you mind being present?
First, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Next up is public comments. I know they're not on the agenda for anyone in the public who wishes to make comments. I see none, so we'll go to the next. License permits and events, alterations to premises of Via Bistro. Kevin?
Yeah, we accuse ourselves. Says carry in works, well, I know.
Yeah, okay. You know the rules.
Yeah. Just don't use the word "works" for the next one.
We're out all night.
No, just five minutes. Dennis hopefully listening.
All right, so I have to read this, so I'm gonna have to go as quick as I can, so.
No, it's all right. It's okay.
Yeah, we can understand.
Class of Board of Selectmen, public hearing notice. The Class of Board of Selectmen, acting as the selection's authority, will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 27, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the Selectmen's Office, Town Hall, 41 Highland Avenue, to consider the application of Celtic Bistro Corporation doing business with Via Bistro for an alteration of license premises. The premises currently include four dining rooms, including a bar, outside front patio, kitchen, storage, front entrance, and rear entrance. The applicant is requesting to alter the premises to include the addition of a date adjacent retail space located at 39 South Main Street, which will include 550 square feet on the first floor and 392 square feet in the basement below. In addition, they will add a second patio in front of 39 Main Street, South Main Street. This additional patio will be approximately 598 square feet. The public is invited to offer public input on this proposal in writing in advance of the public hearing or in person at the hearing duly signed by the board secretary. So come on up, just introduce yourself, and just a quick discussion of what it entails.
Good evening, everybody. How are you?
Good evening.
Brian Houlin, I'm president and owner of Via Bistro, Celtic Bistro Corp. We've been in the town for, coming up on 15 years right now. We've expanded Via a couple of times, and we're going for our last, we're running out of room, so we're taking the rest of the building over. And our upstairs to have a little bit more seating, give us a little bit more room to extend our bar in our regular premise, and to take the rest of the patio out front. Be adding, we'll only be adding about 20 seats, all in all, but it will give us a little bit more room on the inside to make it a little more comfortable.
Okay. Any comments?
Just during the course of the construction, are you planning to shut down?
No.
Or so you'll continue your normal operating?
We've already got our building permits. We've been sort of pitting away on it already. And our goal is to get the construction done on the new side, and then open that up, and then close down the old side as soon as we got our liquor license, or the old side, and be able to redo that over while the new side is working. So our goal is not to shut down at all.
Yep.
It may be a day or two.
Okay.
But our goal is to try to get by without shutting down at all.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Brian, you're the license holder currently, right?
Yeah.
And so Via currently has a full liquor license. What is the issue before us?
You have to expand the space on which it covers. Because it covers a fiscal--
I see, so it's just expansion of the address.
Correct.
Okay.
Every time you take an extra couple of inches, you gotta, we've done this before. When we expanded onto the other side, we did it before, so every time you gotta, you expand your footbridge near that.
I, no, I appreciate it. I was thinking that there was some other wrinkle here that I wasn't aware of.
Well, okay.
Let's hope not.
Not aware of.
I hope the seats are full, so.
Me too.
Yeah. Don't worry about that.
So then I ask for a motion to approve the alteration of the license premises of Celtic Bistro doing business via Bistro, as mentioned in the public hearing notice.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Now there's more seats available for everybody.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
We'll close the public hearing. Good luck. Next up is transfer of liquor license 3A Pizza. I think I read this one too. So come on up. The Board of Selectmen Public Hearing Notice, the Board of Hasset Board of Selectmen, acting as the liquor license authority, will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 27, 2018, 7:05 PM, in the Selectmen's Office, Town Hall, 41 Highland Avenue, to consider the application for Route 3A Pizza and Grill Corporation doing business as 3A Pizza and Grill, 166 King Street, to transfer its annual wine and malt restaurant license to Eldafody Incorporated doing business as Route 3A Pizza and Grill, same address. The proposed owner-manager is Noshie Gurgis. The licensed premises is 1,500 square feet of store space located on 3A, two-door entrance in the front of the building. The public is invited to offer public input on this proposal in writing in advance of the public hearing or in person at the hearing duly signed by the board secretary. So welcome.
Thank you.
So it's your, you bought the new, you bought the old 3A Pizza, is that correct?
No, sir. Mr. Gurgis did, and I'm only here helping him with the language needs, took it for him. Mr. Gurgis has been in the food industry for about 20 years. He's managed about three or four different restaurants. He has great experience on running a restaurant and managing food. He recently purchased 3A Pizza, and 3A Pizza already had their old lic, liquor license, and he's trying to transfer the liquor license to his name.
Okay. Okay. Any comments or questions?
I do have a basic question.
Sure.
Mr. Gurgis, are you a citizen of the United States?
Yes.
Okay, so eligible to hold a license.
Thank you.
Okay. And where else have you operated a restaurant?
Quincy House of Pizza recently.
Okay, similar restaurant?
Yes.
That was his most recent one.
He was there for about 12 years.
Yeah, I don't know that.
I'm sorry to see that, no offense, I'm sorry to see the former owners go.
Honestly, I don't know them. I don't think he's met them before.
They're a very nice family.
Yeah, that's good to know.
Very nice family. So, no, that was my only question, is make sure we had that procedural hurdle addressed.
Excellent. I'm good.
No comments? So I ask for a motion to transfer liquor license 3A Pizza, for transfer of the annual malt, wine and malt restaurant liquor license to Eldafody, Eldafody Incorporated doing business as Route 3A Pizza and Grill, same address. Owner-manager, Noshie Gurgis.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck to you.
Good luck, welcome.
So I'll close that hearing.
Kevin, come back.
No, you can go. We're good.
You're all set?
Yep. You're gonna stay a while.
It gets real boring real fast.
You don't want to stay.
Can we come with you?
It's the St. Anthony's one day with the license. Kevin can't come back, he's Catholic.
The whole town's gonna have to go.
Yeah, that's the weird.
So next up is the one-day liquor license, St. Anthony's Parish. And it'll be a one-day liquor license, 3/24/2017, 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM on 10 Summer Street. Expected number of participants is 120. It's the St. Patrick's Day dinner and dance. Wine and malt only. And St. Anthony's Parish.
I don't know if anyone was scheduled to come tonight. This is an annual event.
Okay. Okay. So I'd ask for a motion to approve the application of the special one-day liquor license for St. Anthony's Parish, 3/24/2018, 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM, 10 Summer Street.
So moved.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Always a good time.
Next up is the common victual license, 5 South Main Street. So this is a application of the license, a general victual license, 5 South Main, doing business as 5 South Main, and it's, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Aida, 18 Russell Park, here representing 5 South Main Inc., which is going to be doing business 5 South Main. This is Brian Hennaberry. Brian will be the sole officer, director, shareholder of that corporation. He's in the process of purchasing the business assets from the current ownership. Jennifer McLeod is here in attendance this evening. She's the present owner. And the point of this is, the CBA license is non-transferable, so we're applying for a new license. The understanding is Jennifer will turn hers in where it's scheduled to close, is hopefully on Thursday, so that may be a smooth transition to new ownership, to old ownership to new ownership. By way of experiences, briefly, Brian has close to 30 years' experience in the restaurant hospitality business. He, for the past nine years, has been the chef at Tosca in Hingham. He's making this jump on his own. He's really very much looking forward to it, very excited about the opportunity to take over. He's gonna be keeping it pretty much the way it is, running the breakfast, lunch. He may jump into dinner service here and there, but nothing right away is my guess. He's gonna get in there and kind of keep it running the way it is, kind of turnkey operation, build on the success that has already been there, and is looking forward to being part of the town.
Any comments?
You got big shoes to fill. No, no comments. I'm surprised to hear the change of hands. Congratulations to you. It's a business that, not everybody gets a chance to buy, to buy a brand already.
Yeah.
And likewise, I wish you great success building upon what's there.
Likewise, I mean, it's a super location. I think you'll enjoy the town and welcome.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion?
No, same thing. We're welcome. We're sorry to see Jen move along, but she's not going too far.
Where's she going? Where's she going? Stay in town.
As I understand it, she's staying as the President of the Chamber. Is that correct? You're staying as President of the Chamber?
I am. I still live in Beechwood. You're not getting rid of me that easy.
Okay.
I've already lined her up after her vacation break to come in, and we'll find some things to keep her busy.
Excellent, good. So I'd ask for a motion to approve the application for common victual license of 5 South Main Street, doing business as 5 South Main Street.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call in in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Wish you great success.
Welcome. We'll see you there.
So when is the first official day?
If it all goes planned, Friday.
Wow. Good luck.
Thank you.
Because the, we're actually moving ahead of schedule, which is awesome, we might want to, let me see if I can grab Paula. It might be better to accelerate her up to this point since I, and then, because I think the folks on that building committee are still talking. So does that make sense?
Yep.
Vivek?
Huh? All of them are signed so far, you're going back?
So far, yes. Wait on one more.
I told her if we were running, if she kind of had sat, we'd be running late, but she didn't, and I said, no, we're running early, so. So she's ready, she'll be in just a second, so.
Cool.
We should envy the moment.
How long does she have?
Got it.
To talk?
No, 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 like, talking about two minutes, or?
She won't be very long. While she starts to talk, I will go down to the Town Hall Committee, make sure they're ready to come in. Makes sense?
But is she ready to come in here, like, in the next couple of minutes?
Yeah, I just grabbed, no, she's coming right now.
Okay.
And the two things we're gonna go over--
Speak of the different--
The two things that Paul's provided are an update to the base fiscal policy. We've done a lot of fiscal policy updates, but this is amended, the kind of base document that was originally adopted five years ago, six years ago, and then a potential auction for a property, which she'll explain in a second.
Paul, on ours, George Gogther. Like Chris said, the financial management policies were first adopted in May 2012. That's with Michael Lewanowski. And since then, there's really three things that have prompted this review. One is it's been nearly six years, so it's good to keep updating these. Two is we've adopted debt policy, reserve policy, and a couple of other things, so there's a little bit of overlap. These policies don't really reflect the fact that we have those other far more comprehensive policies. And the third actually ties into the budget document that we've been working on. We're working on our second edition of that, and that is there needs to be a definition of a balanced budget, and that actually is in under the policy statements, number one. That's, to me, that just makes sense, and then obviously it's up to your input as well, and anybody else, if they think it belongs there, doesn't belong there, likes the definition or not, we can talk about that, but that's, I'm throwing that out there for conversation at this point. So that's basically what we've done. Dawn has taken a look at this. His thoughts are incorporated in here. We have not brought it before advisory at this point, but we're certainly willing to take input from them as well. And, you know, if Chris or Dawn have any more things they want to add to it, and anything that you guys would like to see added, changed, or deleted.
If I may, the definition on the balanced budget is essentially what the state requires anyways, is that correct?
To have a balanced budget, yeah, but exactly what that is--
They don't define at the state level?
No, I don't think they do.
They don't?
No.
When I, this is just a kind of a technical reading through this. There's two different colors of edits. Those are all in unless they're strike-throughs.
Right.
So like the blue and the purple, those are two different people.
We took a couple of swings at it.
Yep. I just wanted to make sure I was reading that right.
If you want, if it's easier, I could give you a copy of the original as well.
Okay. No, I read through it and didn't. And are you, are you looking for any action tonight on this?
No, no, no. I mean, if you have a rate, if not, let's just open it up for conversation.
Okay.
And, I mean, ideally, I'd like to get this into this version of the budget document, but if not, we can do it next year.
One of--
As long as we're moving in that direction.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm sorry, thank you, Paul. One item that leaps out to me is, I think we could use a strengthening in item number 10, which begins to address OPEB. Okay. But this actually goes back, really, and talks about it in the way that we were discussing it five or six years ago.
Okay.
As opposed to recognizing some of the things we've done, but also the structural issues that still exist. So, and I'm not proposing any specific language at the moment, but rather, I, you know, the town will continue to identify solutions and begin to fund other post-employment benefits. We've already begun the funding. I think there needs to be an acknowledgement of a continuing and robust ongoing effort to recognize the structural issues and address the structural issues, as well as funding what we recognize as the current, or the actuary liability.
Okay.
All right? And frankly, I think it might be worthwhile to have the OPEB committee or the PEB committee opine at this point as to what would be advisable language for the policy itself. Because, you know, ultimately, our job is not just to water the garden, which to me is exactly what we do when we simply put money away and hope that it's enough, but rather to study the fields on their own and recognize what we can do to pull ourselves out from under the, well, really, it's the biggest single debt that this town has and many other communities have. And if we don't figure out how to address it, it's just gonna continue to be our biggest single debt and grow.
Okay.
So from a policy standpoint, I think we need to address it from that picture.
Because certainly, you know, it mentions OPEB, but it doesn't include general retirement and general pension benefits that are outside of that, so that would be another--
Yeah, no, no, I'm not trying to limit it to OPEB.
Right, no, that's what I'm saying.
So they're calling the new committee, PEB.
Right.
Yeah. So we might want to just change it to PEB?
Yeah.
Because that's the charter for the new committee chair by--
So in other words, in 10, get rid of the word "other."
Okay.
Begin to fund, that was a--
We can define exactly what that means, because others may not necessarily see that, but we'll--
Right. And we had this discussion when we recharged the committee, that it was, you know, other post-employment benefits tend to look at healthcare, and it doesn't necessarily--
Retirement.
People that know that term doesn't understand that it's retirement, so.
The question, the question that we would, like, we would put to that committee is, in recognizing that we need to fund pensions, what is the most effective way to do that? Is it, I mean, should we also be looking at who administers the pension?
But that's not for this--
No, 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 no. But that's, the point is that was, those were among the things that the charge committee to do.
But I did, I met with Tim Davis Friday, and we talked, and was it Friday or Thursday? I forget which day it was last week, but he's rounding up a crew, and I expect to have some more names in front of you, and maybe next week, to officially get the committee--
So they'll send in, we'll get applications?
Yeah, we actually had some, yes.
There's a couple in already.
So he was courting some people to see if they'd say yes.
See if they're interested, yes.
And we had one member from last time who we tried to get reactivated, who was appointed, but they didn't really do much this past year.
Just a reminder, because if you could, in our packets, if we are gonna be discussing OPEB, if you could, or PEB, or whatever, if we could have a copy of the charge again, and the composition of the committee, which is on that same document that has the charge, just in our packets.
I think the other thing to be out there, if you want any liaisons from various committees--
I think it's defined in that, in that charge, so.
There was one, one from advisory, one from capital, and I think one from the Selectmen. The other item that I bring up, and I'd actually forgotten that we'd enshrined it as a policy some time ago, I just pointed out to my colleagues, enterprise funds should be, the existing enterprise funds should be self-sufficient. And that's a big deal, because it essentially means that if the operations start to slide off the rails such that the town as a whole is in any way, shape, or form subsidizing the operations of the enterprise, then you've slipped outside of the policy. So that brings it right back around to enterprise fund budgeting. We've got to be, we've got to be certain, and frankly, depend upon our finance group to help us out with that, to be certain that fees are set appropriately to cover all expenses.
They will have next week, by the way. If you want to sue her next week.
They're FY '19 budgets? They're coming here for those? Okay, great.
And this is gonna go into this year's budget cycle, or this year's budget message, or?
That's up to however, however it progresses. We're putting the question out there now, and however you can schedule it, advisory can schedule--
We'll put this in that budget book that's released to the public before town meeting, absolutely, if it gets adopted.
It's, I forget, we usually put the budget message in around February, early February? You know, the town manager's budget message is--
We actually have circulated the fat book that we talked about at the end of January. So this, but it gets amended as we go through the process, and then in April, when you all adopt the five packet of budgets, we do the schools and everything else, we're gonna add the updated part to that, because all the policies are, this whole chunk at the end, that are all the town policies, all the financial policies are a whole chapter in the budget documents.
There's just, the way the process is spec, there's a town manager's budget, there's a budget message that goes out.
Which is in the, which is, yeah, which is in that book.
Yeah, okay.
So any questions on that?
Nope. And what?
Thank you, thanks very much. Oh, we got more. Wait, there's more, wait, wait, there's more.
This is a situation in town that has come up. Basically, there is a property that is town-owned, that some abutters have come, and they're here tonight, that have asked to purchase. And that is a process. You can't just have a conversation with somebody who comes in and wants to purchase the property, so I am presenting that as well for your consideration, and just give you a little background on it, and what our options are, and then have discussions. It's a sale, so obviously some of this would be in an executive session, but just to present it so everyone knows what's going on, at least at a high level. Basically, it started back in 2001. Through our normal process, there was a tax-taking done on a property on Jerusalem Road. It's actually on the waterfront, but it is primarily mostly underwater. It's not buildable or anything like that. It was assessed to owners unknown. Now, that's kind of a big deal. That's not something that's locally determined. You have to get state permission to do that, so there's a certain amount of effort to figure out who the owners are and how to reach them. That was done before I got here, but I did initiate the foreclosure proceedings because nobody was paying the taxes. And in April of 2016, the Land Court issued a judgment, and the town became the owner of this property. All right? There is actually only one abutter, because it's like right on the road, it's right up kind of--
For the causeway.
There's pictures that were included in your packet that show that. On this picture, the yellow is the piece that we're talking about, and on the abutte is the orange.
The property we're talking about selling, or whatever we're gonna do with it, is the yellow?
The yellow, yes. There's no house or anything like that on that. There's no, Ed spoke to the building commissioner, and he says that's not a possibility to build.
And that shape right up above the yellow, that looks like a whale's tail, is that land that I believe there's a property on, or is that part of the harbor?
The orange? Oh, water. That's water.
Okay.
That's the causeway, that's the, where the water flows underneath the little branch there.
I know, I think there's a lot of work done on there recently.
So, so this whole yellow section is actually land? Land, but that's underwater.
This is land, this is land, all this is water.
Yes, got it.
The next piece of land is over here.
Yep.
This is Jerusalem Road.
Yep. Great, thank you. I know exactly.
So it's titled, that piece of land?
That isn't, it's tax for closed. The town owns it all, right?
Is it in the 50-foot zone? No, title in the--
I'm sorry.
Not title, title.
That's her, that's her tease.
It's in the water, yeah, I mean--
It's in the 50.
I think it's actually, I don't even, I think it's actually just in the water. I'm not even sure, it's probably 50, I'll be honest, because underwater must--
And how does this help the, why do the abutters want this?
Well, I'll get into that.
Okay.
Okay? So we have, obviously, people are looking for this property. You have an option whether to purchase it or not, to find out if the town owns, if the town has a use for it. And like I said, it's not buildable. I've talked to the project manager, talked to the harbor master, nobody seems to really have a good use for it, which is understandable, because it's not buildable. However, it turns out, the owners did actually come and approach us about buying it, because their driveway is actually partially on it.
Problematic.
Yes, it is problematic. And that is shown in the pictures, all right? This picture actually shows it much better, but you can actually kind of see, the outline is like a sea wall, and then the driveway, on the pictures that you got. So they're looking to do the right thing, purchase the part of land that their driveway is on and stop paying taxes on. Because right now, nobody's paying, nobody's collecting taxes. We're not assessing taxes to that property right now. All right? And I did send in a copy of the letter that, that was in your packet as well that they sent in.
And obviously, there was never a recorded easement on that piece, that property that we?
To my knowledge, no. I, I'm not aware of any. You know, I think it was a surprise to find out that the driveway was on the property.
Yep.
Like I said, it was owners unknown before that. I, I don't, I didn't go back in the history to find out.
Right, well, I would imagine if there was a registered easement at some point, they probably never would have assigned it in owners unknown, right?
Yeah.
That probably was part of that process.
Yeah, I presume something would have popped up at that point. So that is what we're looking at. Like I said, you have a choice whether the town wants to keep it or sell it. And presuming you want to sell it, there's two ways to do that. One is a thirty B process, procurement, which is you put out for bids and review the bids like you would for a purchase and make a decision based on that. The other way is actually set up specifically for tax for closed properties, so particularly for this kind of incident where you can do a, an auction, a tax for closure sale. And that will be up to the tax custodian. And I've actually, I actually did one of these in another community. I, I don't go talking fast or anything like that. But it can work with the help of a tax title attorney. That is to, so.
So.
On either of these, go ahead, Dan.
No, 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 I, I, since I've been on the board, we have had something similar, which I think we sent, it was a, a tax title issue and we sent it out for auction. I remember we discussed the process, whether to go thirty B or with an auction and the kind of pricing in executive session. So I just want to make sure you let us know what, what the procedure is so we don't get too far into a discussion.
Yeah, we, we shouldn't talk about pricing necessarily. We do that executive session, but we do have to make a, make a process.
Okay. And, and then my question would be, does either process put you into a different kind of pricing discussion? You know, is it the same thing? If we go forty B?
Thirty B.
Thirty B, sorry.
The auction process is far less complicated. You know, if this parcel had, the town was like looking to get affordable housing built on a piece of land, for example, and you wanted to go out there and get, and get the best proposal out of something, this doesn't seem to have any intrinsic, I mean, it's, it should be preserved. I mean, you know, a, but you can't really build it in anyway, except for the piece that has a driveway, which is about the only upland, I think, on the whole parcel. And I, I, that goes back, I don't know how long, that's been there for a very long time, but that's not leased. And so the simplest answer here is to, is to put it up for auction, it's, you know.
The highest bidder gets it and we set a minimum in executive session.
Exactly.
Understanding what the objective of the abutter is and knowing that there's, you know, that an abutter has their own issues with respect to, you know, to their driveway. Are they going to, is that a satisfactory process for them?
I think ideally, they would, we would be separated and they would just be buying the piece that the driveway is on because they really don't have any more use for the rest of it than, than anybody else. But that's a decision whether, I mean, that's, actually, that's another decision that you guys.
And we can talk about that level of stuff if we want to in a.
Because I have, I have issues around, you know, if you join the two properties, all of a sudden, the acreage is maybe enough to build another house on the other piece of land that's.
Yeah, the building condition is assured me no way. And you can also do a deed restriction, which we can talk about in executive session.
Okay, there's ways of doing those kinds of things.
All right, so is the purpose of discussion then just to understand that we have options before we make our next steps?
Correct.
And then we can schedule executive session to formalize this. We need to do this part, obviously.
I mean, you know, some of this goes back to when there was a dam at Cunningham Bridge and this was all dry land. So some of this was back in the, you know, early, mid eighteen hundreds.
Pasture.
That's right, it was somebody's property that was potentially at that point dry. And these pieces got cut up accordingly and now it's, you know, on the dry. So it's, it wasn't worth, worth it to anyone to keep paying the taxes on it because it was, it was marshland and unbuiltable. So that kind of goes back to the history of towns. There's all sorts of little pieces of property along the harbor like that.
Right.
Where there's deed access for boat ramps and for access and other stuff. That kind of falls into that. So does everyone understand the, the options there?
Mm-hmm.
We'll discuss this in the executive session as well.
So we'll set up an executive session for the next board meeting, just to, I don't think it's going to be that long, but we can do that.
But are, are you asking us tonight, though, to decide whether we're, we're going to, to confirm that we're going to go through an auction process as opposed to a thirty B?
If you're prepared to do that, but you don't necessarily have to, you can, you can chew on that for a while and, and make a decision and then we can talk about it. You know?
So we're going to decide in the executive session.
Okay.
Get a couple of them.
That's fine.
Okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next up is, join me with Town Hall Building Committee on your update.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
So you got a packet emailed to you later today and are we going to be able to put it up on the Twitter? Yep, okay. So the architects and Shane have been hard at work in the last two weeks since we saw you on February thirteenth, going through some different iterations of how this footprint is going to work with all the administrative offices in one spot. We had some initial concerns that we shared with you that we wanted to be cognizant of and our committee had a lot of commentary as well, once you moved all the offices over, what happens to that massing? So the architects have done a great job adjusting that and finessing it a little bit and you have those in front of you and we'll have them up on the screen in a minute.
Do you have like the eleven by seventeen copy? A little bit easier to read than if you printed them out.
If there's some extras?
Great, yeah, okay.
Is my computer's on or nothing?
I think just while you're starting that, kind of the overview in terms of the site plan, so when we came a few weeks ago, was looking at offlands, basically A, B, and C, and selected the option C, which moved all the administrative offices into the addition and did not use the second floor of the auditorium, second floor of the historic buildings for town hall offices. So that increased the footprint of the addition. We worked in terms of proportion to minimize the length of the addition to the south so that we're able to keep double loaded hard on. So that the good news is that there's very little change in terms of the overall site plan than what you saw before with a smaller footprint of the building. There is an alternate that's shown on the bottom of the drawing L three that shows a stone wall in the front rather than a sloped bank for that. And again, it has the different kind of aesthetic implications and cost implications as well. And on the east side, because the building has gotten larger, on that slope walk is actually shown as a retaining wall next to the parking lot. That wall could be eliminated, but it will probably also eliminate three parking spaces in order to have room for that slope bank. So right now, it's shown as a wall on the east side of that slope walk to the parking lot, except for. No, all right. Tracy, one is perfect.
Oh, okay. So mostly, though, on that first, on the site plan, just pay attention to the massing of the two buildings. It's not up on the screen right now, but it's in your packet.
Are we talking about this?
Yes. Okay. And then we'll have, as we go a little farther along, we'll have some kind of front and side views and some elevation so you can see that. But for the purposes of tonight, we're looking at the interior, the office arrangements and so forth.
And I think you, I'm sorry, I think you get a sense of, the, Wendell, the increase in size of that building is about ten feet on one side, ten feet on the side.
Twelve feet on one side and a little bit less than that on the going south. So if you look at the, the basement floor plan, we've tried to develop each of the floor plans from what you saw a couple of weeks ago. So the large meeting room is shown in the basement. One thing that's different than your present meet, basement meeting room is that we have allowed for a thirteen foot floor-to-floor height between basement to first floor, first floor to second floor, so that it gives a much more comfortable and airy space and doesn't quite have the basement feel that your present meeting room has. On one side of it, near the open, near this large stairway that goes to the basement, it's not physically open, but the large stairway that goes to the basement space is a, we're calling it Selectmen's Executive Meeting Room. So if you have to break out into executive session, it can also be used as a small meeting room when the selectmen are not meeting. On the opposite side of the, the large meeting room is a staff break and wellness room. Other functions are high-density storage. Because of the structural requirements, there's essentially a vault space immediately below the town clerk's vault, custodian's office, and then remote storage for both IT and the municipal inspection and permitting storage, as well as for the town manager. On the first floor, the historic town hall portion is very much like, you saw it a couple of weeks ago. One refinement to it is that we've added cable and, and chair storage below the apron of the stage. That, one discussion that we had in the building committee a few minutes ago was on the elevator, whether to have that as a, the, the, the large commercial elevator, whether that would be a, it's a corner post elevator, whether that would serve the stage or whether to have a separate lift. There are pros and cons about both approaches. And that will be talked further with the theater group in terms of their preferences. Within the link space, we've worked to try to make that a, a, a more of an atrium space than it was a couple of weeks ago. So there's a small two-story space as you enter from the street and a larger one that includes an open stairway. So we're able to have what's classified as an auxiliary stair that's open between two floors in the building. We're not able to do it between three floors. So it's, it's open between the first and second floor. And we've worked on both offices and layouts, I think, to help them be more efficient. Town clerk remains right near the street entrance, the town clerk's office and vault associated with it. Next to the town clerk is the assessor's pair of offices and then next to that is the, the treasurer's office, as well as for treasurer staff. And the parking lot side of the first floor is the municipal inspection and permitting group. So essentially, all the land use, along with the multi-user bathrooms there and the egress stair on the south, if you look at the plan. On the second floor.
Can I just go back? So, so the stairwell, in the new administrative building, that stairwell is open, the one that's right off the atrium space?
It's open from the first floor to the second floor, but it's enclosed as it goes from the first floor to the basement.
Right, so there's a floor, gotcha, okay.
So the, on the second floor, so that the historic town hall is up for future community use space. We plan to widen the corridor on that so that it's a reasonable width corridor and have a wheelchair lift that provides access to the conference rooms that's at the front of the historic building. And so that that wonderful space can be then fully accessible and, and used by the public. Within the administrative building addition, you can again see the open stair with the link that's there. The town manager suite is in the corner, essentially where we are in the, physically in the plan. Next to the town manager suite is the town accountant and next to town accountant and close to the atrium space is sewer department, DPW support, procurement, along with the DPW director that's there. And on the parking lot side is a kind of a middle-sized meeting room, HR, IT, and then we have right now an intern transition space in the corner that's the most remote. And then again, bathroom floor is stacked and a mail copy room right in the stairway.
So a few things that this plan does on the second floor is restore the original projection room, which is, butts up against the conference room on that second floor. And then there's also some nice space that's created in the, in the stairway from the second floor up into the historic building. It's marked right now as gallery, which is some nice space that was not there before.
So, so the projection room is?
It's, it's.
It's, it's accessible from the conference room? Is that how you get it out?
Doors on either side in that.
Just next to the list where you see it says down, there'll actually be two steps down so that underneath this landing is where that projecting space is. It's actually the same location that, there's storage there now and you can see the old projector window that you're covered up.
And, and to widen the hallway, what do you have to do structurally to widen that hall?
Remove that truss.
It's essentially remove the center post.
Just the center post?
Yeah.
I think the studies that were done said the center post doesn't contribute anything from a load-bearing point of view.
No, I'm, I'm just wondering if you had to do every single one of them?
You mean, east to west?
Yeah.
I think so. Yeah, I think you're. Otherwise, you're. Yeah, it's, it's the center post on all, each truss. It just repeats, the same, the same issue repeats itself on each truss.
Okay.
And then what we're going to be doing over the next couple of weeks is working to further develop in terms of interior rendering of the building. We'll do exterior rendering to kind of show the massing of the building. I think having the lower floor-to-floor heights is going to help the addition kind of fit in better with the, with the historic building so that it's not as tall as the historic building is. The other thing that as we get, we'll have a final meeting with the building committee next week and then send drawings to the cost estimator. And what we plan to do is to be able to add, have them estimate a number of what we're calling added vultures. Because you have given direction to the building committee to develop this plan and also looking at a total budget of twelve million. And so we've taken that goal very seriously and so have tried to look at, you know, what are possible things that are not absolutely critical that can be added to the project? And so we've put together a list of seven that you have and the building committee leaving that and one more, but so you can see, those will just be priced independently so that when you have a cost estimate with real numbers, you can look at them and say, you want to do number two, but you don't want to do the others. It depends on what comfort level and what scope. So it gives you the ability to help fine tune the project before it goes to town meeting.
So and, and part of what this will do too, once we have estimates back, which we're anticipating on the twenty-seven? Is that correct? So once we have those estimates back, you'll have, we'll have a much better idea of what numbers we're talking about, obviously. But if, if you're in a, you know, if we're very fortunate, we're in a position where there's a little more room in there than we thought, you'll prioritize some of these things on the list.
And they also lend themselves pretty well to some of the grant applications that have been talked about and for outside private funding and so, you know, there's a number of possible routes for these items.
I think when we come to that point, we might want to discuss this and you presented to us, is for you, is the committee to go over it and give us your prior, what you think should be the priority so that we know from you folks what your recommendation is before we discuss it.
I just have a question about the, the meeting rooms, like where, Chris, just in terms of operationally, where you, where do you think the selectmen, for example, would meet on a regular basis?
I think a lot of the time, probably just being on the second, on, on the second floor. That holds forty-plus people, which is actually more than this room holds, and it's a dedicated meeting room. So it doesn't have all those, so I think a lot of the time, we could probably just be right up here on the second floor. The downstairs meeting room holds over eighty, which again is twice as big as the space we have downstairs. And for a really big meeting, we could even go into the auditorium, the alternative, you can go with the senior. That becomes three spaces. So a routine meeting, we can actually just stay here on the second floor. And, and also, if you notice, there's also a conference room here as well. So if there was an executive session, we could be meeting in there and then go into the meeting room. So if people were, you know, or, or people could, and the same thing in the basement, there's an extra room, there's a, there's a conference room on the first floor that can be used for smaller meetings. Let's say there was a, a meeting of the alternative engine, which is having a short meeting, they can meet here. You can actually have five meetings going at the same time in this building because of the space, because it's just two always accessible conference spaces on the, the little ones, you have a whole ten, twelve people on the first floor and second. I think it's forty and eighty, is that roughly the capacity, I think, of the rooms? I did my counts, right? And there's another little room up in the basement as well, so, and that's not even counting the, the front space in the old building that could be, could be also.
The only reason I ask, and I don't, I think it's really your call, is where, because traditionally, a lot of the selectman meeting rooms, the, the town manager office area, whether it's big or small, is adjacent to that, so.
Well, I'll be the second floor, we're right there.
It's a kind of across, it's not a big deal.
No, 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 we, we, this is the best iteration I've seen so far in terms of flow.
Great.
And, and by the way, just as well that I'm not trapped in the back.
You're trapped in the front.
Yeah, I'm trapped, yeah. I mean, there's a lot of tires, literally at night, there's meetings going on in here and I, I feel awkward walking through them, I do, so. And that'd be a great meeting room for zoning and stuff, you know, it's, there's not that many meetings we even. not that many meetings where you can have 40 people, to be honest.
No, I agree, yeah.
And these will all be wired for live cable and everything else, so we'll be able to do live broadcasts or whatever. And the bathrooms are right there.
So Chris, I have a question. Is there, I know we have generators in town, is there a commercial generator?
This building is set up to have a generator attached as needed. We have a contract for portable generators. So one of the questions is do you...
Do you want a permanent generator?
Do you want a permanent one or not? I mean, it has to be priced down, you have to figure it out. We've been...
Oh, here, yeah.
So right now, we have portable generators.
And the building is set with a, what are they called?
Transfer switch.
Transfer switch. So we can attach a generator, flip it, and then power the building if we need.
Yeah, we currently have two trailerable generators, if I recall.
So we're three, yeah. And they're, and they're set up to go to different buildings. The senior center has a generator built into it. Dear Hill has a generator built into it because it's an emergency, those both serve as emergency evacuation centers or semi-shelters if we had, if we had to use them for purposes. I don't know if this building would ever be used for that function necessarily. We don't, we wouldn't necessarily need this in an emergency anyway, because we have the EOC and we have the other spaces for school services.
Bless you.
I think the only reason you wanted, depending upon the heating and cooling system, I'd keep it.
Right. And we could always have a transfer switch so that we'd keep the main systems functioning. For example, this is geothermal, you'd want to always make sure the systems are going so you could have a, or even have a small generator to just power those, that aspect of it potentially. But I think a full building generator would be pretty, well, they're actually getting a lot smaller than these.
We make a lot of friends with the neighbors.
Yeah. We can hide it in the building in the back.
Do a power wall and have it quiet.
Is a gas line running through there? On Highland Avenue? Anyone know?
Gas?
Yes.
Yeah, there is gas.
At the corner of Beach Street, there's gas.
There is, this probably has gas, access to gas, I'm pretty certain.
You, you, we, I mean, if that were something that were deemed needed, you could actually run a generator on natural gas.
The church has gas, by the way.
That would be the smart way to do it, Steve, was run it on natural gas. That totally makes sense.
Why?
We have solar on the roof, right? We have treadmills in the basement, we have to walk on it.
That's how we get the fitness goals and the energy going, hook everybody up for...
So can I ask a little question?
Of course.
In the administrative portion of the buildings, can you talk about the construction? You know, we talked about going steel and slab with walls that could be moved for flexibility. Is that the way you're thinking about specing out the administrative portion of this?
No, we're not. And it's because it's a more expensive option. And so because of budget constraints, it is permissible to build it in essentially a wood frame and using steel as either columns or beams as needed. So your shorter spans should be dealt with as a wood frame, your larger spans should be dealt with as a steel span. It probably adds maybe 5% to the overall cost of the building, build it as a, you know, a steel frame filled in with concrete floors. And especially when you're having a wood exterior to it, it's not a particularly, you know, common combination.
But it can be done, right?
Absolutely.
You know, the reason I raised that issue is because we've talked about having, you know, flexible office space that, where the configurations can be changed over time. I mean, you stack the bathrooms, I see that that's great. Thanks for doing that. It just seems like the way this layout is, is you could do this layout without changing anything if you had to go steel and slab, right?
Yeah. And we're, the process of doing this balance of the week is going to be looking at, you know, what are sheer walls, what are load-bearing walls, what are open spans? And so I think we can kind of see what that's like and see whether you feel comfortable with it, or whether you feel that should spend additional money for a steel frame to build.
Okay, that sounds like a plan. I'm sorry. Can we just, if we go to the second floor and we look at the, the space between the two buildings, the atrium space, I'm trying to figure out what the roof line looks like on that second floor. Is it, is it a, is it a peaked roof heading towards the Old Town Hall?
The linked portion will be essentially a flat roof.
A flat roof.
And so we're working right now in terms of developing the best elevations and kind of overall design, the best of builds, we're looking at being one-story spaces and looking at, you know, whether the roof of that should be, you know, relatively small space, whether we should have a sloped glass roof to it or a solid roof to it. I think there's many advantages of having that as kind of a glass airy space as you enter the building.
Because that will drop sunlight down through the whole building, right?
Correct.
That's what I was going for.
So as you...
So it can, there's some flexibility with the way that roof lays out?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think you can see, Jack, they opened a below space indicated by the dotted lines. That shows where the light, if I'm not mistaken, the window would flow vertically, right? So you'd be able to look up and see that on the lower floor. So that gives you that.
Okay. I have some more. The second stairwell, it's, so you determined that you have to go with a second stairwell in the admin building?
That's correct.
Okay. And I forgot what you said before, but the slab, slab height on the floors is 13, roughly 13? So you're gonna have a stair transition that's 13 feet, it'll go up. I'm just trying to figure out what that looks, it's gonna be much better than what we have here, right? It'll be...
No, Kilimanjaro is really nice. You get my exercise once a week.
And still want people to fall off the stairs.
That's a possibility now.
So we got, we got...
Bigger possibility.
So, okay. All right. And then I was gonna ask about the elevator location. It looks like you chose to put the elevator into Old Town Hall.
That's correct.
Can you talk to us a little bit about why you chose to do that?
Yeah. I think there's some real functional advantages to have more conventional floor-to-floor heights within the administrative building. So that essentially, it means that you have a six-foot difference in floor-to-floor height between the administrative building and historic second floor.
Okay.
It's also not going to be used for, you know, it's not gonna be a lot of heavy traffic going back and forth because all the town offices are in the addition. There's a corner post elevator that provides accessibility and a six-foot, you know, vertical distance to travel by stair.
Okay.
And it's to, basically, it had to be in the addition to make that stair like that work.
Was that, Jack, was your, was your question why the elevator was pushed into Old Town? Why it was...
And it's essentially to clear the atrium.
Right, and it's to manage the different floor heights, right?
Yeah, there's five different floor heights. So there'll be five road stops on the elevator. And if it was in the addition portion, you'd have to connect the existing building out to the elevator. Whether it's put inside the existing footprint, then we have the access to each stop with the atrium being on the addition elevation.
Okay, so, so I'm just looking at, so it does go to the basement. You only have, what, six feet of height in the basement height, and you're gonna have to dig down on that, right?
That's where the full height space in the dressing area, below the stage where the stage is raised height. And then our new basement level gets you the full 13 feet down.
That's the new basement level on the administrative side.
Correct.
Right? So basically, you're, you've got to have, if you will, a half floor that sits below the stage.
Yeah, but there's access into, into the Old Town Hall too.
Right.
So you're just gonna dig out, you're gonna dig out 13 feet out of that portion of Old Town Hall? Is that what you're talking about doing?
The stair comes up here.
Yeah.
And then there's additional stairs that come up here.
Okay. So how much, and the rest of the building's just gonna have the same ceiling height, right? Are we digging out the whole?
No, no, you're not. You don't have the budget for it.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that's what I want to check on. And I got a question about, how are we gonna spec finishes in the Old Town Hall? Are we gonna...
So that's part of your alternates?
Yeah.
If you look, so, and we can, Wendell, Ryan, or Shane can speak to this a little bit. So obviously, we need to do all the work that's required by code.
Yeah.
We were just talking in the building committee meeting a little bit. So your hallway would be drywalled and finished out because you need access to the projector room, you need access to that conference room front. But the offices themselves will not be finished out.
Right, right, they're right. They'll stay the way they...
Like an unfinished data.
Okay.
But these, these seven alternatives essentially represent levers to pull.
Right.
You know, we'll go back to the initial estimates, we'll find out where they are. We're very cognizant of the $12 million target.
Right.
Ex any external funding, just 12 million bucks for the plan. And so these seven are the seven levers you can pull to adjust that price.
Okay. And then you chose not to stack the bathrooms in the basement, that's my last question. Chose not to stack the bathrooms in the basement. Is there a reason why you did that?
Yes, so you could have a reasonable-sized video room in the basement.
Okay. And you're gonna use some kind of a pump system to pump it upstairs? Is that how you're gonna do it?
It's gravity.
Gravity, you can do gravity in the basement?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and it's a question that doesn't appear on here because we're looking at four plans as opposed to anything else. Efficiency is a, you know, is part of the big consideration that the board had adopted. And one of the areas of efficiency that really strikes home to me is the envelope, the exterior. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to prescribe anything, but have you given thought at this point as to the materials used on the exterior of the building? Yeah, so I think in terms of the exterior finish would be clavers we're looking at, but they would be vented behind the clavers, probably two-by-six construction is what we're doing actually up in Topsfield with a similar-sized addition with foam insulation plus a layer of sheeting that goes in front of the wood studs so that, you know, you're not short-circuiting even with wood studs. So, you know, we're very cognizant of envelope issues. Can I just request of the committee that you examine using for the new building, I don't know what requirements would be with the old building, but with the new building, look at using composite materials. Claver, you know, claver design is fine, but I, I just, I know from my own experience that it is a great pleasure to come home after a really crappy winter, look at my house and go, yep, I'm, still got 18 years to go. So it just, I recognize that we're talking about two different things, residential property versus municipal property. But exactly for that point, the maintenance cost of the property is one that we will, and so depending upon what you come back and tell us with respect to the use of different materials, a low-maintenance approach can save a fair amount of money paying for upfront.
The historical commission...
I'm talking about this side.
Has broadly, has broadly, anything that's visible from the common, they've objected to composite window trim.
Now, you understand what I'm, I'm talking about for the administrative building.
Got it. With the face that faces the common.
Yep. No, no, I get it, but I would challenge anyone to come by and look at my house and say, that's not clavering.
I, I hear you.
Okay. So I just bring it up, and it's, I understand...
I hear you. I love AZEC. I love AZEC.
I, I've heard it called a million different things, but I call it Godsend.
Yeah, fair enough.
Okay, thanks.
No, I actually have some questions, but I'm gonna maybe send them to you via email. They're just some specific things about some of the roof rooms and just questions I have. It's more really internal kind of layout and design questions that I want to take up.
If I, we could just, because we meet as a building committee next Tuesday, that we get them prior to that?
We'll get them tomorrow.
So we can all be addressed in one forum, because then things do have to go to the estimator.
Great.
Could you do an afternoon meeting?
We are, we're meeting it too, Tuesday, if you're free.
I'll just have one follow-up if you don't know.
Okay.
Looking at the, I believe it's the south side of the administrative building, you have a stairwell on that side, the second stairwell. And it looks to be on the first floor, but you have an exit to the other side. I take it that is an exit on the...
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just one other question, the basement, no windows at all, it's all below grade?
Yeah.
So I have a question, looking at future options that are there, and I think of this building, ten, 50 years or so down the road, looking at almost like, like the space station, there's available options in the space station to put things on additions, conduits, geothermal type things like that. Is there a thought to things like, let's say we can't afford a geothermal, but two years from now it becomes, let's say, very, very cheap. Are there ways to have like optional conduits that would be almost, almost like Lego, you put in and attach?
Like a captopress.
Or things like standby generator or geothermal, or if there's a way to optimize the air conditioning, things like that. I mean, you know, I go back to like New York City subway, they had extra stations built because they expected to expand, and some of them were built, and some of them, you go flying through, you see these empty stations that are ghost stations, but they actually are fully built. Is there something along that line where, you know, 50 years from now, when I'm not here, but the adaptability of the building, if it's still here?
I think some of them will be, some will be easy, some will not be. So, you know, having conduits through foundation for a generator, that's easy, it's basic, it's very little cost, can give you flexibility. Geothermal, there's a substantive savings. If you did it within the property here with initial construction, you also have the advantage of owning property across the street. So potentially do geothermal across the street later on at very little premium. But to do it through the parking lot area, essentially tearing up the parking lot, you pay a real premium.
Can you talk about the common?
Yes.
So you thought about that as far as potential, I wouldn't say expansion, but options that may be...
Yeah, at least in terms of general cost.
Available, but not too expensive at this point. Let's say it's pressing down. You have, you know, that extra subway stop, for example, is how I think, or the space station has it available, you put on another adapter, you can do what you want with it. You know, extra conduits, I guess, would probably most commonly be done in the building.
How much does geothermal cost?
The one I, when I spoke to them about two weeks ago, it's about $400,000 for 15,000 square foot building, boring four to six holes. So everything, that was everything included.
So we have the engineers that...
Yeah, we had included, I think we had 369 in the last estimates we did.
And we're doing a more in-depth study now, so we'll decide if that may change.
So, and that'd be one of the separated numbers that you see when we look at the three different heating options, cooling options that matter for the building.
I think a way that you're, we collectively will have to look at some of these choices though, is, is the operational difference. Because you, you're going to compare a capital cost to an operational cost ultimately. And if the capital cost is, let's take an argument, $400,000, let's go with 369 if I like that one better.
A lot to in the division.
And the payout on that is five and a half years based upon what it costs to heat, cool, administer this and the building you're storing, then you can start to make sense of that, right? But if we don't go through that, that review, we're going to be trying to, trying to compare a total dollar cost without any perspective.
So they will be doing a life cycle and a cost-benefit analysis on the three different heating and cooling plants that the engineers are taking a look at, so you'll have an idea.
Wood stove is one of them, right?
Not in the wood building.
I'm going with the...
I'm just gonna go with a fire in the apartment.
That composite starts to melt.
Employing wellness, employee wellness from outside. Chop wood. Sterno.
He uses his own wood, warms himself twice.
Yeah, one comment I have is on, I'm having a hard time seeing air conditioning and mechanical ventilation in the auditorium as an alternative, as we look at this in this final way. I mean, I, I think if we build the whole, I get this vision, we build the whole building and then there's a meeting in the auditorium, and there's no air conditioning. I've been in large meetings with no air conditioning, it's a fairly suffering experience, and I'm having a hard time... I'm having a hard time considering that as an alternative. Somehow we need to make sure there's air conditioning in there, cause it would seem to me, you know, again, we have a meeting, once this thing is all done and there's no air conditioning, I think people are gonna say, what was this all about, you know? And as well, air conditioning is something you use, you know, well into the fall and early spring, particularly if there's big meetings, if you ever been to these, so I, I don't know how, I just, we need to make sure this, I, I would like to see most definitely air conditioning in the auditorium.
Keep in mind, these are seven different levers. You know, one of them's probably painted red, you know, you don't wanna pull that one, so, you know, prioritizing all of these things is an important thing, but these are options at your disposal in case the costs don't come in where we're all thinking and hoping they're gonna come in.
Right.
It's just, this is like, you know, they're thinking ahead of the game, they're thinking two steps down the cho, the chessboard here, in case this thing just comes in like a crazy number, these are tweaks you can make.
Wait, keep in mind too, we've given a budget based upon what we believe the, uh, the, the current operational structure and the town would accept for direct debt and then subsidized debt, if you will. Making no assumptions with respect to other sources of funding outside of that, okay? And, and taking, taking no assumption into, uh, into play that we're lifting our foot off the accelerator to get that. But if the number does come back and it is higher than that twelve million dollars, then we're gonna have to prioritize something. So, I, I, you know, I, I, I would agree with you. I would, there's nothing more miserable than sitting through, you know, an overheated meeting with overheated people.
Or overheated.
Have you seen this?
Let's, let's figure out where it comes in first, but recognize that we, we set the parameters on this to make certain that we have something that will pass, so.
So we did, uh, Mark and I went before CPC last night, um, so we had a good initial conversation, that application will go in, so we did socialize that three million dollar number that was broken out and that you're financing one of the options. So, and it was, um, received relatively well, I would say, there was good conversation, I know there was healthy debate after we left, so.
On a whole bunch of things, not just the town hall.
So that process is underway, and then there'll be, um, not necessarily be, before we come to you again, but there will be some more grant applications that are going in the pipeline for it, so.
Thank you.
Um, if we, so if you are available next Tuesday at two, you'll be in the front conference room, um, and, and that is pretty much the last time we'll be able to take comments before things go to the estimator, so that'd be, that'd be the hard stuff on that one.
So, um, can we do steel slab as one of these options in the back? Or how do you wanna deal with that? I'd really like to see what that estimate is.
I guess if you ask that, it will, it will be a very meaningful add, so we've gone through that process a number of times, so.
Well, can you, so, so I don't want certainty, I mean, it'd be just nice to get a ballpark estimate of, um, the only reason I'm asking is because, you know, having flexible space that we can reconfigure over time is important.
Okay.
Let me, let me, let me talk to one in the next couple of days. We, we did a town hall public facility at Western Mass five or six years ago, the original estimate was, was steel with, with concrete slabs, came in way over budget, we went back to wood frames, so let me see if I can take that out, do some sort of comparison, see what the, the percentage difference is before, yeah, cause it's, it's a lot of work for these guys to go back to their structural engineers.
And we've also gone through that in the last twelve months on the town hall edition on the North Shore. And went ahead and went back to wood frame.
You, you'd originally said a few minutes ago that you, you, you felt that it might add about five percent.
Yeah.
To what? To the construction cost itself? Okay. So even if, assuming that that number is reasonably accurate between the two of you, you know, if you could give us a thumbnail idea, I, as to what that might mean in dollars and cents. I, I, I frankly agree with, uh, with the notion that it, it is attractive to have the capability to flex the space. It may be beyond our capability to pay for it, but it's worth knowing what it, what it might cost.
Yeah.
Okay. It, it kind of addresses your question as fifty years from now, what can this building be if things change? I mean, I, I, I know that the, the, the role that I play, the job that I do, um, is effectively addressed nowadays with about eighty square feet, three computer screens, and a link to the cloud, all right? Whereas ten years ago it took four people, and twenty years ago it took six. And so I have no idea what the future brings for us, but I, it occurs to me that the, um, the same effect can come to municipalities, and it would be helpful for us to recognize that our space might need to flex for additional uses if this is truly expected to be a fifty year building.
And, and, you know, I'm, I'm looking at it now, I mean, maybe there's a way to still use sticks, but, but have, um, steel structural beams, you know, running, running in places that would give you a little flexibility to floor paint, so you don't have, you know, load bearing walls in the middle of where you might wanna reconfigure, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, absolutely, and so that, you know, one of our, um, goals that we're doing between now and next Tuesday is actually to do a structural plan that will differentiate between, you know, clear spans, steel beams, uh, load bearing walls, there's a certain amount that will need to be done for wind and seismic considerations, and so, you know, it's to look at what is the, how does this plan with the envisioned primarily wood frame, some steel long spans, um, work for your flexibility that you have as a clear goal, um, and what things would change if you went with a steel and concrete?
Okay. So, Tuesday, you'll be talking about those issues? Is that?
Uh, within the building committee.
You, right, okay. Okay?
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
So next up is, uh, Master Plan, Planning Board update.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Clark.
Is it good evening?
Good evening.
Should we wait for Diane? Okay, looks like she's here. Clark Brewer, as you know from the planning board, um, we're here, Peter Macik is our new.
Director of Planning.
Director of Planning, and we're, we're pleased to have him, uh, help with the Master Plan effort. First thing, I'd like to just put a plug in, we have a visioning session tomorrow night, seven o'clock at Willcut Commons, seven to nine, it's gonna start out with a presentation and then we're gonna have, um, uh, public input stations around the room. We're excited, um, about, um, the second phase of the Master Plan. But I'd like Pete to just give you a little bit of his background and, um, why he's excited to be here, and then we can get back to, um, some more background on the, on the Master Plan.
Could I just steal the thunder for one minute?
Yeah.
I just wanna note that Pete's wife's hockey team beat the Cohasset, um, Hanover women's hockey team last night, um, so.
Wow.
I don't know if this is a friendly, uh, situation, but congratulations to Norwood High School girls hockey.
Thank you. And I'll follow that up, I just got a text message that the Norwood boys team was a seventeen seed.
Yeah.
Just beat the, uh, the number one seed in Division One South.
Excellent.
And so, uh, if you haven't, uh.
Do you know what team it was?
I don't know, I know it was down in the Cape, it was down in Galerino in Born, but I do not know who they won, but it was a big upset, and I'm sure Diane and the rest of the Mustangs are, uh, are having a good time.
But I did go to the game yesterday, root for Cohasset and my niece.
Yeah.
Thanks, Pete.
The hockey rivalries, they, they end at the, at the ice rink, they don't spill out into the.
That's true.
Where'd you grow up? Clearly not a Boston kid. Go ahead, sorry.
I grew up here.
I know you did.
Wear your Brewer's jersey to watch New Jersey games, see what happens.
They last for a lifetime.
So should I introduce myself, my name's Peter, uh, I've worked here, I think I started on February twenty-second, uh, and I'm happy to be here. For the last four and a half years, I was a town planner in Hanover, and, uh, prior to that, I graduated graduate school at UMass Amherst, uh, and, uh, and I did my undergrad on at Westfield State, so you could say I'm a state school kid. Uh, I grew up in the North Shore, but I am happy to be here on the South Shore. Uh, I enjoy working at Cohasset, and, uh, I mean, in Hanover the last four years, and it's led, led me to this position here in Cohasset, and I'm excited to be here.
You lived, you lived in Cohasset?
I did, so for, uh, for about a year and a half, I lived in Cohasset when I was working in Hanover commuting, and I enjoyed my time, so, uh, I got to know Peel Pizza and Mr. Dooley's, and, uh, I had a beach sticker, even though I do not now, I do commute, I live up in Boston, but, uh, I do, had, I did have some ties here to Cohasset, which, uh, definitely was, uh, one of the things that intrigued me to, uh, come and apply for the position, and, uh, knowing, uh, the work that was going on here. Uh, so I'm very happy to be here and be part of the, uh, the Master Planning process.
Can't, uh, municipal employees get beach stickers? Is that?
That's another mating party.
Is that an all same thing from, oh, it's not on our agenda.
No, I did know, it's not mating.
It's not on the agenda.
I know the sticker amount went up this year, but, uh.
It's a thousand dollars a season, so payable to Chris.
Do you guys have any questions for, uh, for Pete about his, uh, his role here?
No. We're happy you're here.
Yeah, I'm glad you're here, because there's a lot going on, uh, as you know, um, you've been to several of the, um, various planning meetings that are in town, um, Master Plan meeting, um, we've got Town Hall, we've got the Harbor, we've got the Master Plan, we've got, um, Affordable Houses, we've got a lot of stuff going on.
You have a lot of stuff going on, and I'm, I'm happy to be here. A lot of my, uh, experience that I gained back in Hanover will be able to, I'll be able to transfer here. Previous to, obviously, obviously the previous, previous discussion on the renovations to Town Hall, uh, here, you know, I was part of this, the, the, I would say the team over in Hanover that restored Hanover's historical Town Hall. That was exterior envelope, uh, I would say restoration, uh, because the, which, because the cupola was redeemed, uh, deemed structurally unsound and was removed from the roof.
We got one of those.
So, uh, so online, I can, I can tell you some of the stories and some of the experiences that I've dealt with in Hanover, and, uh.
Well, we may have one to top you with the cupola, right? Six hundred pounds flew off and landed on the ground.
Killed the Wiccan witch in the west, though.
We're still looking for the witch, yeah, right.
But I'm happy to be here, and thank you so much.
Welcome.
So, um, as you know, the, uh, the Master Plan's been in process for, for over two years, we did a Phase One where, um, we, we hired the MAPC as a consultant to, to run a, um, you know, a, an outreach session, do survey, um, uh, put survey results together, and then, and give us, what they, what they essentially did is boiled down the priorities, challenges, opportunities, um, and strengths as a kind of outline for, um, uh, for the, for the next phase. So then, over the next year, the committee has been working tirelessly to, to assimilate, assimilate all the information that has, is available. We've put out an RFP, interviewed consultants for this Phase Two, we've hired the MAPC, uh, on board, they'll be, uh, at this, um, session, um, tomorrow night. We, we, we've made a lot of progress, and, and a lot of the, uh, uh, great individuals on the, on the, um, Master Plan Committee have stepped up to the plate to take on roles and, um, um, cut through a lot of, uh, complicated information to, to put us on the right path. For example, a, a visioning statement, um, there's a lot of data that, um, we've been able to give to the MAPC to get a head start on, on their process. What, what we expect to do is give a brief, um, update to, um, Town Meeting in the, in the spring. And then the, um, the draft plan is due, it's, we're expecting to, uh, for it to move pretty quickly, and, um, we're expecting it to be due, um, the, uh, you know, somewhere around Fall Town Meeting. So we, we may have a presentation for Fall Town Meeting of that, of that, uh, draft, draft plan. So, again.
And this is required by the state, they recommend that we have a Master Plan every.
Every so often, it's not, uh, cast in stone, but the overarching goal of a Master Plan is to, uh, take control of the future of Cohasset, to deal with, um, change, and certainly we've, we've had a lot of change over the last fifteen or twenty years since the last Master Plan. We've got a train station now, you know, hundreds of new residential dwelling units, hundreds of thousands of square feet in commercial space. You know, as you know, we did a corridor study, got a corridor study done a couple of years ago. So there's a, there's a whole lot of moving parts, and what we want the, to get out of the Master Plan process is clear direction, uh, feeling of security, I think, for, um, Cohasset residents and business owners, for, for what's possible in the future that protects the things that are important to, to all of us and allows Cohasset to be the best, best town it can be, uh, into the, into the future. The timeline of planning into the future can extend much more than ten or fifteen years. But, uh, Peter, I don't know if you have anything you wanna add?
Yeah, that's a typical life cycle, I would say, of a Master Plan, is about ten to fifteen years, and, uh, you know, it, it's recognized, having a, an approved Master Plan recognized by the state, I believe, kind of puts, uh, will put Cohasset in front of a lot of other communities, uh, within any grant, the application processes, uh, that the community will be looking for, for money, such as the green communities, uh, usually having an approved Master Plan is usually a, 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 you know, a box that a community checks filling out, you know, a process, and it says, do you have a Master Plan, has it been approved, and is it, has it been done within the last ten to fifteen years? Uh, and if the town has that, it usually puts, uh, it vaults the community to the front of the line, so I believe having that is, uh, is a, is a great strength for a community, uh, moving forward. And, uh, these are four, obviously four pillars of, of Cohasset, uh, which have been recognized by the committee, the coastline, the geography, the town governance, the community education, and the town heritage, so those I would say are the, uh, four cornerstone of the plan moving forward. I would like to mention move, uh, in the, in the near future, uh, a, um, a website will be rolled out, which is, is being developed right now by MAPC, our consultants, uh, and there will also be a Facebook page, which will be rolled out in the near future.
Yeah.
Uh, which will, uh, be a place where the, the committee, uh, can put up documents and, you know, ask survey questions, and really, I would say, I have a, uh, ongoing conversation with the community as this plan takes shape.
You have any, any specific questions?
Just for clarification on the approval process, so the public can all know, is it, the, the Master Plan is done under the ages by state law of Planning Board.
That's right.
And the, the, the approval process really is the Planning Board will approve it, uh, just so the public knows, this isn't something we're necessarily gonna be seeing a debate in Town Meeting or whatever.
That's right.
Just to clarify for the public.
Yeah, correct. The, the, the Planning Board has a responsibility of approving, approving the, the completed, the completed Master Plan. But I think it's important to have buy-in from all.
Oh, no doubt.
Boards, and, and when the plan goes final, I'm sure there'll be a large presentation, a large forum, which will include the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, Conservation, and, uh, all, all, all other interested boards, but you are correct, the final, uh, the, the big, the, the accepting vote is done by the.
Exactly.
Corridor study? How are we, are we gonna incorporate some of the fun?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Corridor study.
Uh, how are we gonna incorporate the corridor study into the Master Plan?
Well, uh, it, you know, three A is an integral part of, um, the economic engine of, of Cohasset as a, as a state highway, a limited control over it. As a parallel track, um, there's been some discussion about, um, trying to get, um, As a parallel track, there's been some discussion about trying to get a study done of the north 3A section. The state has already taken on a 3A south redesign with changing of the lanes so that they're not drag strip, adding bike paths, sidewalks. And I think there's an economic development to that whole south business district. That's a component of that. And certainly, in terms of picking up the ball or loose ends, as like, for example, the economic development component of what the state's doing, certainly that will be a part of the master plan.
So the state's study starts at Sawyer Street and runs south? Is that how it works?
The second review, I think, would be from the train station to Stop and Shop.
Okay.
We've got this sort of space in the middle that isn't a business district and probably will never be.
Probably never will be.
Yeah.
So I know a lot of folks have real concerns about traffic issues and getting on and off 3A.
Safety.
Will the master plan try to address those issues?
Yes.
Hundred percent.
Safety is important. And unfortunately, you know, I think a lot of our safety issues are out on 3A. And as I said before, we have to work closely with Mass DOT to try and get any changes out there. Having the corridor study in place, done by the CTPS at the state level, what that does is that helps convince Mass DOT to make the steps that are critical. Because we know what intersections are the most dangerous and what the other issues are.
But we are working, we're working towards solutions on 3A.
Yeah. The biggest single solution I think that could be addressed there is the ability for drivers north and south to recognize there is a difference between red, yellow, and green. That would be a big plus.
And speed.
You know, there are some tools and techniques that can be used to slow traffic down. And the big one is a road diet. The road diet is...
They get it there.
And...
What is a road, tell me?
A road diet, you know, right now, if you look at the intersection at Beechwood going south, it's four lanes and it's a drag strip. Basically, people, for whatever reason, want to be there first.
They want to get the next light before the next one.
It's just human nature, maybe. But it causes problems. And there's certainly, that, the corridor study indicated that at that intersection was three times the state average in crashes. And we don't want to have any more preventable accidents. Unfortunately, we've got this road diet corridor redesign in the south section that's in play. It's on the tip.
It's on the tips list and actually I've got emails for it.
For money.
There's a couple of years...
Tips list is a month, the list for...
Tips is a...
Transportation improvement project.
Projects. And it's an entire list and it's a rolling capital, pretty much a capital list of projects that are statewide or within each, I would say, regional planning agencies area. Cohasset's within MAPC's. It's also the MPO, which is the Boston area transportation, I would say, area. So Cohasset's competing with about a hundred other cities and towns for a big pot of money to do, to fund projects to improve their transportation, you know, districts and areas and intersections throughout the state. And so as you drive through different towns and areas within Massachusetts, as you see projects happening, those are being funded by the state tips list. And it's an annual process. And Cohasset's in the pipeline for the redesign, I would say, on the southern section of 3A.
Yeah. And what they did, basically, at Mass DOT on their own, did the redesign up to conceptual level. And that's what puts a placeholder on the tip and starts to sort of time meter running. And that's what we want to do for the north district, the Stop and Shop to the train station. We want to get a conceptual design in place and get it into the tip so that it can be funded. And, yeah, there's a lot of competition. And when the time is right, we'll certainly want to reach out to our state senator and rep for their support of funding those improvements.
Diane?
So the corridor study is one of the things I was asking about. But just in general, there's a lot of other studies. I mean, there's other even committees, like Alternative Energy. And there's an Affordable Housing study that was completed, Harbor Study's ongoing, Open Space. And then one that I'm not sure about is Sewer. But how does the master plan incorporate each of those, if at all, ultimately?
Well, you know, to a great extent, our committee and certain members of our committee have an intimate knowledge of what's going on with those efforts. So, you know, I hate to put Peter on the spot, but, you know, he's going to be a great help at coordinating and integrating all these efforts so that the master plan takes them into account and they're coordinated. And there are conflicts that lead to like, I don't know what to do.
Even as addendums to...
Correct. I've already met with the Harbor Plan, the Harbor Plan Committee. And, you know, I'm going to staff that committee. And I know the Open Space Plan is, I would say, at the ten yard line right now, it's about to be completed. But I think the biggest thing is to making sure all plans coincide with each other. You know, what you have is you have three large planning documents that are being developed by three different consulting groups. And so it's going to be, I would say, the job of the Planning Office is to be able to juggle all three to make sure all three are not independent on each other and they talk to each other.
And then just another separate question is just, will the master plan have ultimate recommendations? Like the town should consider adopting a bylaw or zoning?
The last, yeah, the last section is an implementation plan.
Yep.
And kind of the more specific, that implementation strategy, change zoning bylaw here, you know, it is, the better, so that we could just sort of take these instructions and like, this is what they came up with, this is what it's based on, the rationale is good, and we can adopt it in a fairly efficient manner. And, you know, I say that there's been discussion about, I guess, issues with change in Cohasset over the last couple of years. Surely, we remember last year at Springtown Meeting, there was a couple of zoning articles that were, you know, hotly discussed and important to many. And having a master plan in control of the kind of broad brush stroke and like the big picture, and then the details, I think is going to help those kinds of issues in our constituents that expect us to figure those things out.
Right. I mean, it almost should be part of our plan as opposed to being some kind of citizen-driven, all as welcome as they are to do that. I mean, we shouldn't be caught by surprise that we need to consider a such and such in order to whatever.
Yep. And last year, we were sort of in the middle of the master planning process. We knew the second stage was coming, it's coming. And, you know, I expect that people learned a lot from the citizen input back then.
And will the master plan, or does the master plan involve at all sewer planning?
We've asked the Sewer Commissioner to come to our next meeting. I don't think he's confirmed.
They don't have a rep on the committee, I can't remember. They do not.
They do not.
Okay.
I'm actually, Chris has put me in contact with the Sewer Commission in the regional study, so we can be helping take care of that, you know, helping, I would say, have those conversations for the town at a regional level. And hopefully representing the sewer conversation with the Master Plan Committee and the Master Plan Consultants.
Yeah, great.
So we are going to have a couple of other public meetings that are focus meetings. One's on, you know, residential housing, another one on 3A economic development. But the one tomorrow, that's kind of getting everybody sort of up to speed again. Again, seven o'clock to nine.
At Willcut Commons?
Tomorrow night at Willcut Commons is our kind of kickoff for the Phase Two of the master plan.
Great.
Anybody who can make it, certainly will, we'd be appreciative.
I'll spread the word.
All right.
Bear your buttons, these are new.
All right.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your attention.
Hi.
Next up is one updating reviews.
Okay. So Jen and I spent some time on the phone with Council's office going through some of this today. So basically, the core is what it looks like. I'll just take a quick step through it. It appears we might have reports from, I'm talking about part of committees on Article Two from Master Plan House, it sounds like probably 250th, they're slated to give an update. The budget, which were, you know, so next Tuesday is the first joint meeting. That'll be with the Advisory Committee and the Sewer Commission and the Water Commission are both coming to present their budgets. That's going to be at Willcut Commons. The week after that will be the joint meeting with Advisory to meet with the School Committee to look at their budget.
This joint meeting with us?
Correct. It's a joint meeting with Advisory and Selectmen to hear the presentation from the School Committee. And on the 20th, the schedule is to have the Capital Budget Committee come in front of a joint session of Selectmen and Advisory to hear the Capital Budget recommendations. And that's all on target at this point for those three. And the chairman will not be able to join us, I'm afraid, for that meeting. He's going to be otherwise occupied on Capital Budget. But the, in a good way.
Tell them where I am. I don't care.
Yeah, no, 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 so.
Something to do with sailboats.
I bet.
That's what I hear. It's a rumor. So, so, next time I want a crew, just let me know, I'll join you, I can be on your crew.
Trust me, you don't want to be on his crew.
Okay, there we go.
And not during March and April.
You actually have to work.
And each of those other, and so I do want to talk a little bit tonight about what other articles want to plug in for these next few meetings that we're banging out. And by the way, on the 27th, we're looking for the 20th, but we're likely the 27th CPC will come in. That's not scheduled to be a joint meeting at this point, but we could do that if it makes sense. Because they're rolling through, they started, well, they've kind of already started their process, but they formally kicked it off last night. I'm going to hope to encourage them to kind of move this process into the fall next year to start a little earlier so we don't have quite to scramble at the end. I think it might be helpful. But that's, and Pete did a lot of work with the CPC committee at Hanover, so I think he'll be very helpful in helping them do that. At the moment, by the way, I still want to pay bills, so we're okay. There'll be some moving of money for the appropriations and stabilization. I haven't recommended any of that yet. Capital Budget, as we said, is moving along. I have on Article Eight, I have Council looking at whether or not we even have to renew this because last year, we adopted the Municipal Modernization Act, which allowed us to make revolving funds bylaw items as opposed to annual renewals. So I don't know if we're going to have to have it. I'll know by next week, so that may just get off, great.
That went through in special...
Yeah, last year, an annual town meeting last year. So, no, we may not have to renew this. Then we have the Rover Per article. At the moment, the only one-time cost is a town contribution to a regional sewer study. The three towns of Cohasset, Hull, and Situit want a $200,000 state grant to kick that process off. The goal is to use all of that first. And then there's a potential, each of the three towns would have available $100,000 each to continue that process as we need to going forwards.
Is this something Sewer will be discussing with us when they come before us with their FY '19 budget?
Yeah, we can talk about that next meeting.
Forgive me, let's go back for just a second. The nature of the study is to...
Is to explore the potential for regionalized sewer service among the three communities. In some instances, Hull is a big plant that has some excess capacity.
Right.
We have a small plant and North Situit has no, well, they have a plant in Situit, but they don't really have capacity at this point and they're looking for options.
Situit Lake Cohasset has only partial coverage of their...
Correct. Hull is pretty much fully sewered, I believe.
With excess capacity.
With excess capacity. And Cohasset and Hingham have actually sent sewage some in the corner, the west corner area, off to Hull for some time. The conversation's expanded last year to talk about, including Hingham and Situit. Because North Situit is an area that has been primed for Situit for potential economic development around the train station, but there aren't no sewers there. In addition, the area of the border along the coast that ran, abuts Government Island and abuts the Gulf River, that whole area, that's all, that needs to be sewed for environmental reasons, as much as Little Harbor was. There's a lot of environmental factors.
Is he in true?
Yeah, I forget the name of the street, right up in there, and all along the Gulf River. That is not, that border and up in there, that is not sewored. And that is a priority area for Situit, that area, right up until North Situit. And there's some other areas in the general, in that part of Situit that could be potentially covered. In order to connect Situit to Hull, you'd have to go through Cohasset. The question becomes, is it feasible to do it in an economical way and doesn't benefit the town? So the state is very big on regional solutions. The question is, does it make economic sense and does it make ecological sense? And that's something that's being looked at at this point.
It's going to get bid out to a private consulting firm?
What I'm current is the contractor for Hull, they run their plant, and they're actually doing the study. Their engineering wing is doing the study. And all the towns are at the table, all three towns.
So we're involved in this already and are we spending money on this already?
We actually, we've contributed a small amount, both from some funds we had available and from the Sewer Department to do a first phase, which is almost, we had a meeting about it today, as a matter of fact. And it's, we can talk more about it with the Sewer Department here. The, that was just, is it worth continuing the conversation? That was really the question. And the preliminary answer is yes, it seems worth continuing the conversation. The question is, what does that mean? And there's some data that was in that today that had to be cleaned up. There were some areas that could be potentially sewn in Cohasset where the numbers were not quite right.
In an article like this, as I think we discussed in the past, we should have a vote of the Sewer Commission. It's not listed there.
No, no, because they haven't, they haven't voted on anything.
No, no, no.
All even has a vote.
I just saw that you go through the other articles where they're relevant to committees. We want to see what their vote is on that, if something's related to the Harbor. We want to hear from the Harbor Committee, whatever. The second thing, if I may, is, second thing is, this here doesn't indicate, you know, once voted on, then the $100,000 is sort of spent. Is there any other mechanism by which, you know, we want to consider putting in there upon approval of the Board of Selectmen? I mean, so we may want to look, you know, we may want to look four months down the road whether or not we want to spend that $100,000. Therefore, we'd require, you know, Chris or somebody to justify to us for the towns, we have what's going on there.
That was a conversation I was having with the Sewer Board this afternoon, is how much do we need to potentially set aside for the moment? When do we need it? And what's the mechanisms for approval? Because it would be there as needed, as, you know, after the next phase of the... The discussions this afternoon took us into the fall, towards the end of the year, before this next phase is done with the state grant funding. And at that point, there'll be another reassessment. Do we continue to go? What are the relative contributions from the other communities? And what will be the mechanisms? That is something we have to discuss.
So this is going to address...
Go ahead, Steve.
I think where you may be going is the same question I have, which is what exactly for the town of Cohasset are we looking to achieve? Not for the region, but for the town. And then separately, how do we, in order to achieve that, what do we have to achieve regionally? Because without that guidance, we could be going off on a turkey sheet. The other part of it is, do we have the right people at the table? And this is no disrespect to the Sewer Commission, but the Sewer Commission is charged with overseeing our operation and our enterprise fund and the like. And this is much greater than that. And let's say for the sake of argument that the objective is for the town of Cohasset to achieve the capability to eliminate the use functionally of septic systems over the next 50 years, right? That has a potentially enormous impact on quality of life in the town, both good and bad, depending upon which side of the coin you're on. All of a sudden, your quarter acre lot is fully developable, right? And so that has a lot, a lot to it, which may come well outside the purview of the Sewer Commission alone, right? So that's why I'm asking the question and...
Well, these are all, by the way, these are all the questions that are, that need to be teed up. So it's important to have this integrated into the whole concept of the master plan because that's guiding the town's future.
Right.
Um, it, it's important to have our town planner at the table as well for these conversations. It's also important for the board of health, engage in conversations. The, the, the sewer commission has long had a kind of a, a map, potential future development of the systems based on environmental reasons. And the board of health has identified a couple of locations, um, that have, have issues. Uh, except, uh, not three, there's a couple of areas that have had some issues that may need, that, that may benefit from sewers, um, for environmental reasons and also for business reasons. Um, it's now time to have a much broader conversation about, okay, where, what, you know, um, what are the impacts? Those are the things that that need to, those, those are the conversations that are part of this regional look from a Cohasset perspective. Well, what is our piece of it? What do we gain? What are the pros? What are the cons? And those are all the things that will be talked about as part of this. Uh, and then, and again, this doesn't commit us to anything. The other point of this, it doesn't commit the town to any action. It just, it, it explores how the town's future, uh, environmental, economic, ecological needs could be met.
Some more of an overview of what, what options you're.
Uh, the town is, has to do a, an, an updated, uh, the, the town has a, um, the town sewer permit has been, um, up for renewal by the EPA for a couple of years. So, uh, and they've been all, you know, they, they came all gangbusters a couple of years ago and they kind of stepped back. And, and that's kind of on hold while this whole bigger conversation takes, takes place. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of, well, we could spend hours talking about this tonight. Uh, the, um, the, the, this is now teed up to start the conversation about do we wanna set aside some money to continue the study? What is the study? Where are we going? And I do think it's important to have the folks, uh, to have, to have the sewer commission at the table, but also talk about who else should be around the table.
Yeah, just, uh, when, when, um, Pete and, um, Clark were here earlier, I mean, I, I do think at some point sewer needs to be an integral partner with, to, however it's choreographed, I don't know, but with the master plan, because there's so much that you just mentioned, you know? What is ecological? What, what, you know, what's the health of our waterways? What, what is it gonna look like in 50 years in terms of septic, et cetera? And I think that's very much a part of master planning, cause it impacts development for sure and quality of life.
So that was a part of the conversation I got was having this afternoon with Pete. So this is part of the, his very rapidly growing.
I know, really.
Plate, plate, uh, and, um, cause it's also the right time. I mean, there's preliminary look, is it even worth having a conversation? Well, we've got to that point. Economically, it's worth having a conversation through a bigger perspective and also from a community perspective. The question is, what does that mean? And what do we have to look at to really get to, to the answers? Well, it's worth looking at further. Is it, is it potentially worth doing? That's a much bigger question, which we have a long way to go.
Yep, correct.
So.
It's extremely expensive.
Yes. Now, again, so one of the things, um, that, that's, from a timing perspective is that we were just talking about three A. The state is targeting three plus years from now to do that southern part of three A. If there's going to be a pipe, it's sort of, potentially that is a perfect time to do sewer, when the Roseberry been dug up. Cause you can only, you only get one shot at that. Uh, and whether or not the pipe's active or not is something else entirely. Uh, so that, so these, it's good to have those conversations now, because we have a window coming in about three plus years.
Absolutely.
And it would take years, by the way, to get the permits and everything else and.
It's like putting in the conduits in the town hall.
Senator Connor was also at the, at the meeting today. And, and also the state regulators and the federal regulators, who are all gung ho on trying to address multiple towns at once if at all possible. And Senator Connor's point was that, well, he made no promises whatsoever about funding. He did say that the state, it looks much more favorably on regional solutions rather than individual ones these days, where they make sense, obviously. I, I mean, it's not regional for regional sake, but, um, if it makes sense, then it, then it was worth it.
Absolutely.
So, uh, so that's at the moment, the only thing that's in there. Um, I've asked, uh, we, we always have this chapter nine of liability on here. I, I asked council, do we really need to have it every year? Or is it once? It, it, do we have a perpetual approval? And so I'm just beginning to answer on that. And the same with Article Twelve. We do this every single year. And I had someone tell me, well, you don't necessarily have to renew it every year.
Can you ask him if the, uh, Mass Municipal Modernization Act has talked about that?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, yes, and broader, do we need to renew these every single year? I know we've done them every year, but, you know, sometimes you ask the question, well, why? If you don't have to do it every year.
See, at least one of the things that we can do, and I think you were about to say that, every two years or three years.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, the next one is new. And, and, and so I, I would add, I can have the assessors ready to come in and meet with you about this PW exercise exception, if you'd like. I mean, it's not that complicated, but they're the ones who are proposing it. So, uh, the board of assessors come in.
Do we have any PWs in town?
I have no idea.
Well, they've been released by now.
There's not that many. I wouldn't need, I don't know.
They're in Old Town, old basement.
Well, I mean, I, we can, I mean, the board of assessors is recommending, cause they're the ones who have jurisdiction over it. Um, and again, I don't know if anyone even qualifies. It's P, President of War on this.
But it's in place in case it happens.
Yeah, so you, you adopt and if, and if someone.
It's a good policy for the town perhaps to have. I, I don't think we have to.
No. So you want to have, don't you want to have the assessors come in or no?
I don't.
Okay, all right. Uh, so we can just, we just picked it up the next meeting. CPC is not gonna be rated till the end of the month. Um, renovation, we were talking about, this will be relocated further up.
Has Don helped CPC put together all their financials and their balances and all that stuff?
Yeah, so he's been working with Russ on that. And Trace has been working with him on minutes, which she's now their standing assistant. But I can't wait around too much or she's gonna.
She was there last night.
Yeah. She loves doing this.
We talked about it at the next meeting, having some kind of a, the financial picture. What do we have? In what buckets? What do we get every year? Yeah.
Well, should we get, so next, next week, and also start with the water tank, um, proposal. Uh, I do have some amendments in the Sashar Otech agreement, which will circulate, and I have to talk to their superintendent. The agreement, the town was one of the founders of this 50 years ago or 60 years ago.
Yeah.
And there are some tactical changes that have to be made, and they wanna tweak the, as a proposal, tweak, uh.
Which one, which one do you want?
It's not sure what, uh, this is number seventeen.
Don't they wanna add another, uh, community?
Uh, there's, they wanna update the, the provisions for adding another community. There is a, uh, there is a, and communities have added, I think Abington came in and a couple of others. Um, they just wanna modernize some of them, you know?
They wanna make it easier to, to add.
And I, I'll have George come in to talk about our, our, our rep. Um, council's working on the language for this, definitely state statute for the selectmen to set the speed limits as opposed to having to go through the study. So I don't think that'd be terribly controversial.
As long as it's on Sawyer Street, it's thirty miles.
Um, council is looking at language on nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one. This is the renumbering of the, the recodification. Um, we'll probably set that up probably in two weeks. That'll give them time to do that.
Yeah, they've been working on that for quite some time.
It's all, it's all done. The recodification's done. It's now, what form do the, do the, um, do the warrant articles have to be in to, to do it? Um, zoning is on March seventh, next Wednesday, the planning board has its hearing on the large home review article, the marijuana article, and the renumbering article. So that, that'll be next, on the seventh. So they'll be ready to refer it on to the selectmen, hopefully, on the thirteenth, the following, the following week. Um, and, uh, there have been a couple of petitions for scenic roads, which end up having to get back to town. Many of the problems that come in kind of late in the process. So whether or not the planning board's gonna have time to hear them, to get them on the warrant for this spring is questionable. So, um, this, it's the first time it's ever happened, and we need to have a little time. So we don't wanna rush that and have this.
Is, is the.
And that's, that happened last year with setting it up.
Yeah, no, that, yeah, I, I know what's happening. This is the first time round. Some, some came in the fall, but they were not correct. And they just came in a week or so ago, and we're not pushing up against the end of the process. And I don't have enough time.
Do they need a full hearing?
Planning board has to have a full hearing. They have to notify about fifteen different people.
Right.
And there's six different, uh, points that have to be addressed.
Right.
And then.
Sort of requires a little study.
Just as a matter of course, normally the advisory committee, it's likely will look at any warrant article anyway. So I, I don't know if there's enough time for those presentations to be made. Uh, and not that we wanna sell this down, we wanna do it the right way.
Right.
Um, so.
So could they use the same ones in the fall or?
Yes, yeah, no, absolutely. They could, they, they could come into the.
Just take those and, but they'll work that out with the planning board's gonna make a decision on that?
Yes. So, um, so next week will be water sewer, then it's school, and then the week after that is, uh, capital budget. We will, I'll, I'll, I'll tee it up for you. Hopefully by the end, there'll be a chunk to look at for next week. And then we'll do the, the overall budget re- review at the very end of the process on the twenty-seventh. That'll be the last. Just, if you could hold open, I know it's not technically scheduled, it's April, I wanna say April third. Is that the, is that the following Tuesday? I know that 'll be six meetings in a row, but that's the last day before we have to go to print. So if we need to go one more meeting to finish anything up, we can have the last meeting.
So you're talking April third, uh, hold our calendars.
It just, I mean, hopefully we will not need it. Um, we won't need it, but you're not here. Okay.
Me neither.
All right. We could, we could do a meeting.
Three one I could do.
No, we could do something that, that we, if it's necessary, I'm just saying. We don't have to do it. I'm just.
Oh, we'll just have to work.
Figure it out.
Our goal is, the goal is to get everything done by March twenty-seventh. We're gonna get there.
Wow.
Let's go to do that, even if we have to go late into the night perhaps, if we don't collapse.
I don't think so.
No, I think, I, we can always, by the way, another alternative is try to start the meeting if I'm early, if I need to. But we're on target tonight, and I don't wanna belabor this anymore. So, um.
Yeah, that might be, um, set them earlier, set them at six thirty.
Okay. Um, we're on target, so I'm gonna pivot to the next, uh, my report. Does you have any other more, more questions at the moment? So, so the review process is ongoing. And advisory will pick, start taking of some of these articles. Oh, there's two citizens petitions due, I'm sorry. Those have been circulated. There's the bag, uh, the ban on plastic bags. Um, and I'm working, trying to get them teed up for advisory and for the selectmen to come and present.
Yeah, I think, uh, just on that, I, I would think that that's, we would need a dog and pony show.
Yes, and they're ready to do that.
Understand all the.
And then, uh, the, the, the opponent, I, I was at Rotary last night, I ran into, uh, the, 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 to Lisa Hewitt for all of like a minute, boo, and, and she was kinda calling the boo. We have cross passing today, so I'm hoping to catch up with her. I did meet with Tim Davis last week as well. So the, uh, the change in the composition of the harbor committee.
Proposed.
A proposed change of the composition of the harbor committee is the other citizen petition that was.
Could, could I ask maybe to put that on an agenda sooner rather than later? Just, I have some creative thoughts that I'm gonna talk to Jack about, but, um, anyway, just on that.
Next meeting, we have time?
If, if possible.
Executive session next meeting, right?
Yeah, if you start the meeting, you have an executive. We'll do a, a pre-executive session, if that makes sense, on, that's on the real estate.
On the matter we discussed earlier?
The matter we just discussed tonight, the Jerusalem Road piece.
Yeah, okay.
And then, um, right. I can see if I can get them both on next week if we can, to start the process.
Yeah. So, so look through the, um, look through the, come with ideas.
Um, so that's, I mean, I, the, the warrant is shipping up fairly compactly at this point, so, um, I hope at this point.
And when's the marijuana?
Uh, March eighth.
March eighth, that's the planning board?
Uh, no, no, so that's, actually, that's, um, a community discussion about the business of marijuana retail sale, what it means. We're still trying to nail down a couple of participants, but that's the date it's set for seven o'clock at the senior center. We'll put more up on the website in the next couple of days.
Yeah, what was it?
Thursday, March eighth.
Thursday, March eighth, seven PM. And it's, it's a, uh, we, we're trying to get, I have the Max Municipal Association, uh, staff members been dealing with us all around the state, talking about the regulatory environment. We're trying to get someone from the business community, the prevention committee, I believe Nicole Garrity will speak, um, and then either Chief Quigley or someone from the law enforcement, they'll also speak about them. The reg, the enforcement community and how that works.
Is there any way to talk to town council or see if there's any ruling out there on taxes that are from ill-gotten gains, which are not federally legal?
There's, there's no answer to that right now.
Okay.
That's how they get Al Capone. What do you got in mind?
I know, but that's, I, I worry that if the tax is out there, can we actually collect and spend it legally? I don't know. I, I know you can't put it.
And there's no answer.
You can't put it in a federal bank. That's FDIC. You can do it in a state, state chartered bank, and you can put it into a.
No, we have plenty of all too. We'll keep it here.
I'll, I'll keep it for you.
Did you have a question?
Um, yeah, it, the, um, the group of folks that you described, uh, it sounds like, for the most part, they're, you know, they're, it's a group that we would like to, you know, like to gain some interest, or gain, gain some, uh, knowledge from. Likewise, we talked about making certain that the forum was open to proponents.
Yes.
And has anybody responded to you?
Well, yeah, the, we're trying to confirm this group called Weed Maps, who are, they do consulting on the business side all around the country now. And they did a presentation of the MMA committee that I serve on. So we're trying to get them on, cause they would, they, they can discuss the business.
Well, we, yeah, we did decide that as a group, that, that, we did decide as a group that we want this forum to open to a balanced opinion, because.
Right, that's why I was asking.
Yes.
And the, and the MMA's position is not pro or con. It's just, here's what it's all about, and here's what it looks like.
No, no, I understand, but the, the, the point is that all of them, all of those, those entities are invitees of our own. And I just wanna make certain that if there are the groups in favor of, uh, opening up Cohasset to this type of business, that, you know, the.
I'm not aware of anybody at this point, in particular in town, but the Weed Maps folks, I think, represent that whole side pretty effectively, and a very.
All right.
Professional manner. Their position is, hey, it's, it's the law, let's do it right, and here's the options, and here's what can happen in the community. So.
Okay.
And I'm trying to get as many materials in advance, we can put up on the web and circulate electronically as we can. So, um, so to pivot, um, let's kind of pivot into my report either way. Uh, the CPC, the Community Preservation Committee, Committee's looking for one, remember, there's one citizen at March position available, so if anyone's interested. Uh, there is a seat available on the CPC. Um, because the rules of the timeline for all facility stickers has changed, the renewal date is actually March, not July, not June anymore. So they go on sale on Thursday.
Oh.
So get your stickers now, when you don't have to rush to the beach, uh.
Are they, are they available at Town Hall?
They'll be available at Town Hall starting on Thursday.
They're also online.
And online. And I, if you can do them online, do them online. And if you have the least complicated car structure, you may have to come in, but.
They're also available at the rec, uh.
Oh, are they gonna sell them at the, uh, at the Health and Rec Fair, which is March twenty-fifth?
That's the only weekend, the only weekend they'll be available will be that, that day.
So March twenty-fifth at the Health and Rec Fair at the Deer Hill School, uh, they start on sale here during regular business hours on Thursday, here.
And you know what? Oh, do you remember, is it clerk's office or what?
Yeah, it'll be the clerk's office. Now, there'll be signs. She usually tries to set up. We don't really know, the, one of the reasons to move it now, cause it's a quieter time of year.
Yeah.
And so people won't be, you know, trying to cram the kids in the car and get to the beach that same day. So we're hoping it'll be a little more mellow spread over the course of March. Uh, but again, we encourage anyone to use the online option if they can. It's a much easier way to do it. Uh, but if you wanna come in, starting on Thursday, Thursday, March first. Uh, and so those two, so, um, as I may have mentioned, uh, our, our town council is, just take one of those and pass it along. Uh, the, and that's another one, take one and pass that along. So the, uh, Deutsch Williams is reorganizing into, into two separate firms, it appears. And, um, they're gonna stay as, Paul Durensis will stay as town council through town meeting. And then we'll, I think we'll take a harder look as we get into the spring. But I needed him to take action, because the primary council for Deutsch Williams, that had been working on land use, has left it. He's kind of taken a legal basis from the law. Um, so there is nobody at Deutsch Williams to do this. And we needed someone, uh, for the Smith Place and other land use matters for the interim period. Um, Murphy Hesse, uh, has done this a lot in the region. Lauren Galvin worked with Peter Machik, actually, in Hanover, done a lot of work. She actually lives in lives in Waimera. And so she, she's been brought on on an interim basis to be special counsel on those issues as we need them to become. On labor, because that firm is also separating, I ran through several folks and did a quick look at Clifford and Kenny is a firm that also does lots of work on the Sashar, they came very highly recommended. John Clifford is a former town manager as a matter of fact, went back to the law, was a lawyer who became a town manager, so I'm not sure which is the right path. They have a lot of experience and they've been great. And again, they're going to be our special labor counsel on an interim basis. I think this does present a good opportunity for us to explore council going forward, but we do need people who are in the middle of union negotiations, I cannot have not, need to have someone I can call on. And with the influx at Deutsche Williams, I don't want to be in a place where people are going to be in different places.
Can you just back up for a second? Give us some background on what has happened at Deutsche Williams?
Yeah, so, so what's happened at Deutsche Williams is the firm is breaking into two primary pieces. It's the school and labor piece, practices going in one direction and the general municipal practice is going in a different direction. So it's Paul Durensis and Friends, which is what I've been calling it. Paul Durensis and Friends is the general municipal practice and it's, I don't know the name of the lead partner in labor, I've never met her, but it's, it's labor people and friends and school going in a different direction. They're going to relocate, I believe, the labor folks to Westwood. And I think Paul's interest is keeping his part of that firm in the city. Still covering the same, same basic areas. So there's some flux as to what they cover. And now that said, Paul has a lot of history and the core folks that are with Paul, including Ross and a couple of other councils we use, Ray and Kim Salant and Jim Hargrove are in the middle of a, of a number of cases and we're going to keep them in place at this point. Because it just makes sense if they're, some of, particularly in a couple of cases that we have, we're already in litigation.
But for instance, is Kim Salant remaining with Durensis?
Yes, so, so that litigation group is going, is staying with Durensis in that group. I'm not sure what they're going to be called yet, they don't really even have a name. So Paul and Friends. So the labor group, which includes John Fosker, I've been using fairly regularly, is kind of changed complexity a little bit and I don't know, I think they're gearing more towards schools than municipalities as they go forward, though they've got to still do municipal work. But because they've had such a, they've, they've had a couple of big transitions, Brian Magnner was our primary lead counsel, he's gone to Harvard University as council. So he's gone to the private, well, quasi-private sector or public sector law, I guess. And, and it was a loss because I thought he was, had a great history and, not that the other folks there aren't good, it's just they're.
He was really good.
Yeah. John Clifford has done a lot of this for a long time and so has Jamie Kenny, his partner in the, in the region. They know the communities, they know the regions, they know the local unions and they know the players. And I feel very comfortable that they've, and they've actually already met, I've had John come in and meet with us to talk about some strategies, I think it's been very helpful. We don't really, we don't generally put counsel at the table at these negotiations unless we have to. So hey, we have a couple ongoing now, we don't have counsel at the table on any of them, but I need somebody I can call and get an answer. And so, so there's really no clock running on either one, except there's a small monthly retainer on Clifford and Kenny because that way we can get calls to them on certain, five hundred bucks a month. We'll see how that works. So I'd like them, if you could ratify the appointment of both these special, there are special councils through, I guess at this point, the end of June. And then I'll come back to you with more of a plan over the next couple of months as to where we want to go. And again, I'm not saying that, that Paul and Friends might reconstitute in a way that will work. And again, I think for now we, we'll have to, I have to work out something with Paul so we can retain whatever the new firm is to keep as the town council purposes through town meeting.
Is it, is it worth, is it fair to say that the intent is to keep continuity within general counsel?
Yes.
But for specific areas enumerated here, labor and land use.
Labor and land use.
Your, your recommendation is for interim councils.
Yes, and there might be a third on the Old Salt House stuff and other, and other stuff around the harbor if necessary.
Well, we'll back up for that for just a second. Because that, that area could engage everything from liquor licensing to, again, I suppose, to land use.
So Jim Lampke is also staying on, I mean, I'm not adding, you know, he's been our special counsel on licensing issues and he's been doing some code enforcement work and, and I, I think he has a great value in that. He knows the lay of the land and that better than almost anyone I've worked with. And he actually provides special counsel with lots of communities in the area for that kind of similar work. He's not equipped, he is, you know, general counsel at Hall, so that's where he's primarily placed. So I, I don't know what we need yet, there's really no action there, it's, you know, the conservation matters are still ongoing, I don't want to talk about that too much tonight. So, but at this point, those are the only two, it's the land use special counsel and the labor special counsel. And then I'll, I'll come back with something, a more formal recommendation on Paul's group once I know what they're called and what, and they'll be retained, I think, as general counsel at that time being. Does that make sense?
Yep. I'd like to see contracts like this, all these contracts obviously have a provision where either, even can be either party can terminate it at any time, which these contracts don't have.
They, 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 these are, these are all terminable. This is a. Well, they, they are terminable with notice, or actually.
Should be written in the.
No, you're right.
Because I'm sure there's a.
Especially if you're paying or returning.
Exactly, if there's a problem, you want, you want to have it under your control, we want to have it under our control to say when something ends, you know? So I don't, if, actually I'd like to see a.
No, no, I'm happy to.
Add that back, you know, get some kind of debt put on those.
That was part of our conversations.
Should be terminable by you at any, or us at any time, without notice, you know, whatever.
No, no, absolutely. And they, you know, that's a, so that was, that was definitely part of our conversations. All right. I will, I'm happy to make those, to, to, to make sure that's amended.
Copy's provided at 10 cents a page. These guys have never heard of PDFs?
Yeah, well, I like to get everything as PDFs as much as possible.
No, you want this tentative?
Well, we could, we could talk about it next week, I'll tweak the contract language. Or unless you want to approve it with that caveat, it's up to you, I don't care. I don't think, I don't think pending, we can wait a minute.
Wait, so we, so we approve what's complete and full?
Yep.
Yeah, let's wait.
Okay. All right. And I think that's, that's what I have at the moment. Although one last event, a week from today, a week from, in two weeks from today, we're going to be doing light tours on Depot Court. There's three LED streetlights that are out there. And I think I said this to you all on Friday as well, so the, once, as it gets dark, there's two slots, I don't, is it, I don't remember if they're on the head. So it's on the website. You can come, they're, they're half an hour separated, go to the Sashar Community Center. There'll be a little questionnaire, you can take a look at the lights, see them in person, ask questions and then fill out a survey. We'd love anyone who wants to participate to do it, to get, we want as much feedback from the public as possible. So it'll be, I think the tours are being led by one of our alternative energy folks, I think it's Steve Girardi. And he can answer questions about the lights and how they look and all that. So there's three of them on Depot Court now. And it's, driving through is one thing that's actually also important to be able to walk it, feel it, see it. So that's next, the next two Tuesdays, so.
Is there an hour?
Yes, and I don't remember, I'll tell them.
But it is like from 7:30 to 9:00 or something?
No, 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 it's, it's like, there's a one at 6:00 and one at 6:30 or something like that.
Okay, okay.
After the sun goes down.
Yeah, after the sun goes down, it's dark enough to see the lights. And it's, there's not a lot of time commitment, it's just come, I think we're going to have a few refreshments if anyone wants some coffee or something.
Beer under the lights.
Beer under the lights, maybe the new owner of Five South could throw something out for us.